Welcome to Community Conversations, where we will be bringing you fascinating discussions with local leaders about topics that everybody's talking about. I'm Dr. Cinder Sinclair and I will be your host today. Our special guest is Eric Friedman, and Eric is the Santa Barbara City Council member representing District 5. Welcome, Eric.
Great to be here, Cinder, and great to reconnect with you. We were together almost 20 years ago back in our service on the Cal Board.
You are right about that. We served on the Cal Board together. Has it been 20 years? Wow.
Just about.
Oh, gosh. Well, okay, so let's get going. You were elected in 2017 and started serving in 2018, is that right?
Yes, January of 2018.
Okay, and so for the last, what, seven years-ish, you have been tackling some pretty big controversial important issues around our community. And so let's start by talking about the ones that you think are the most important.
Well, thanks. It's been quite a journey over the past seven years. The day that myself and Councilmember Kristen Sten, we were elected at the same time together, and the day we were getting sworn in was the day of the debris flow. And that was, took up the first, you know, months and months of our time on council. And it was really trial by just getting in there and dealing with it. And at the time, it was very traumatic for our entire community. And then, just as we're getting past that, we went into COVID and another just completely unexpected and worldwide issue. And now we're in, back in a place, coming out of COVID, that I think our community were focusing on the issues that traditionally are the issues in Santa Barbara, that quality of life, planning, long-term, what's the city gonna look like? There's a lot of challenges, but a lot of opportunities right now. Chief among them, I would say, are affordable housing and homelessness, but affordable housing in particular is one of the greatest challenges we're facing right now. How to create more affordable housing for those who live here or want to live here or can't afford to live here and are part of our critical workforce, that the wages just are not keeping pace with the rents here. And how do we address that? And so there's a lot of discussion in the community on it. One of the things that we've been focused on and I'm proud of is the Local Housing Trust Fund that the council adopted and is able to create a lot of affordable housing. We just approved our first two projects through that. We leveraged about $3 million that we had in the fund that will get about $3 million more from the state, and it will be on the way to hopefully getting 100 affordable units in downtown and up in Upper State Street area.
Congratulations. Wow, that is quite the accomplishment. And when you say Upper State, you mean like at the Locombra area, right?
Correct. One of the projects was the Housing Authority, is the Housing Authority, bought the parcel of 15 South Hope. It was a project that was approved back 2013, 2014, and it had 45 units, but it was all market rate. And eventually, at the time, there was no inclusionary for the average unit density program. And what happened later was the Housing Authority purchased it, and now they're in the phase of trying to go to construction, and it will be deed restricted for those making under 80% of the area median income and even below that, but it's somewhere critical workforce. In particular, when you're looking at the hotel, restaurant, and tourism industry, a lot of those wages which are the backbone of our community. We don't have the housing for them to be able to afford to live here, so they end up commuting from long distances.
So thank heavens for the Housing Authority to step in, because otherwise, what, it would have been up to just the developers and...
Yeah, so at that time, it was a market rate, and so it would either have just sat vacant. It was, the building was torn down. It was the old AGA rug building. Or it would have been market rate eventually. And we need more affordable units in city, not necessarily market rate.
So that's up at Locombra. And then down on Lower State, what else is there?
So in the lower, in the downtown area, one of the major projects that we're dealing with the city is the Paseo Nuevo redevelopment project. And it's a complex project and ownership. So the basic of it is that the city owns the land underneath. And back in the late 1980s, when they redeveloped and turned it into a mall, usually De La Gara Street went all the way through, what they did was they closed it off and they made it into the mall that was, for many years, was Nordstrom's and Macy's.
Yeah, sure.
And then those entities that, they had a 75-year ground lease. And so there's still about 40 years left on that lease. So the city, even though we own the land, we don't control what goes on on the property. And so now, the owners of the lease has changed had many times. And the new owners right now are AB Financial, and they inherited the lease because the previous owners of the lease defaulted and they had, loaned them the debt. So we're working with AB Financial. They are interested in finding a project that will benefit the city. And in particular, it would be a mixed-use project. So you would have housing redevelopment on the upper floors, and you would have retail space on the ground floors. And the interesting part about it is that the retail spaces would be smaller spaces, which would be more conducive to getting local businesses in here, because a lot of the spaces, if they're too large, they don't meet the need of a local small business. And so they're not gonna come downtown. But if you have these smaller footprints of spaces, and then you have people living right above, you have this great mix of a balance. So right now, we're doing our diligence. AB Financial is doing their diligence to see where does a project pencil out? How much is it gonna cost? What specifically is being, is gonna be proposed? And it will be somewhere hundreds of units, somewhere in the 500 range. And we'll hopefully be able to get a mix of incomes in there. But we will have to see how it all works out. And that's really exciting, because it will really invigorate downtown, the downtown project in the area downtown. And then going into State Street and that discussion.
So exciting. Man, you have got a lot on your plate, you and your fellow councilmembers. And Kevin, you're looking out for us.
Definitely. It's a, it's a challenge, but this is the fun part of the job. The other, the other major issue with housing that ties in is the downtown redevelopment, in particular State Street. What's the future of State Street? And as we work to get more housing downtown, it will change the character of State Street. Not just a shopping district, but also, we're gonna have people living there. So you're going to have reinvigoration of 24/7 of people there. And it'll be a place for locals, which will also encourage tourists to come here as well, because if you go on any vacation, you wanna go where the locals go. And so right now, it's been a long slog. I really appreciate the State Street Advisory Committee that we set up. Seventeen individuals, three councilmembers plus 14 other community leaders who really gave a lot of time. It went on longer than expected. They put in a lot of thought and effort and to look at how we want the downtown to look for decades to come. And there's just a lot of great ideas, and the master plan is getting finalized. It just came to us this past Tuesday, which was the 17th of September. And we looked at the long-range plan and gave some feedback to now allow it to go out of the State Street Advisory Committee to go towards the Planning Commission and Historic Landmarks and get them involved. And we'll have a really great plan to look forward to, to aspire to. But then the question is, what do we do in the interim? And that's always been the question. And the council was somewhat divided on the short-term measures, but we have a plan going forward to really reinvigorate, try new ideas. It will, based on a majority of the council, remain closed to vehicles, the whole nine blocks at this point. And, but we can look at how are we gonna address public safety issues? E-bikes and just cleaning up, make it clean and attractive for everyone to go down there. And out of that meeting, go back and watch it online or read the staff report. There's a lot of great ideas that were mostly supported, a lot of them by the council as a whole, to try to address those issues and get some life back into downtown.
So there's the implementation of the master plan at some point. And then, when does that happen? When does the implementation begin?
So the master plan is not quite finalized yet. So what we did on this past Tuesday was, or last Tuesday, was we worked to give feedback that this is where the Planning Committee had gone. Do we support in general those concepts? And we did. So now it goes through another process of getting feedback from the Planning Commission, Historic Landmarks, and there'll be a public draft, so the public can comment on it as well. And that will come back to us hopefully early next year. And then, once the plan is adopted, then the challenge becomes, how do you implement it? We're already taking steps to, the city administration is looking, the city administrator and her staff are looking at, what are the needs going to be in terms of implementation? And the number one thing is gonna be the cost. Block by block, there's gonna be different costs depending on what we do. And that's gonna be the big challenge. And that will take, over time, it's not all gonna happen at once. It will take sometimes 10, 15-plus years when you're looking at it just in terms of any redevelopment and structures. At the same time, going back to start of this, is Paseo Nuevo is on a different track. Because when we come to some type of understanding with what's possible there, then they would go through and get their permits to build. So there are parallel tracks, but they're not necessarily tied to each other, but they will definitely inform each other.
So there's a master plan that has not actually been approved yet, and then there's gonna be the implementation of it, which will take a while. So in the meantime, between now and then, that's what you're talking about with these different ideas for, you know, safety with the e-bikes and all the other things that you're thinking about for State Street. But did I hear you say that for sure it's gonna be closed to cars, the whole area?
Yeah, so the big discussion on Tuesday came down to, on what to do in terms of reopening, close, finding a hybrid solution between vehicles and the community. There's a lot that support keeping it closed for the nine blocks, but there's a lot in the community as well that say, hey, we need to reopen it until we have the master plan, figure it out. And our staff had proposed a hybrid solution, which was to keep the 500 to up to, so about Haley Street up to Correo, keep that closed to vehicles and use our resources to really program, clean, address ways to address e-bike speeds in that, in that area, and really see what's possible. And then open up the, from Correo North, one-way vehicle traffic. And the reason for that, there was a lot of reasons for that proposal, but in particular, public safety has challenges with the nine-block closure, in particular the police department. Fire does as well for access. And so nine blocks is a bit of a challenge, in that four to five blocks is a sweet spot. I had proposed something similar about a year ago to council, just based on those reasons. And I had done a lot of research, talking to over 40 businesses in the downtown area. And I reached out to Boulder, Colorado, where they have Pearl Street, and they gave me a real lowdown of what they did. They had a 10-year planning process. They funded the project, they built it, and then they created one of the most successful outdoor mall experiences. And it was the process in particular that they followed, which resonated with me. Because you wanna be building towards something. You wanna ensure that you have the adequate resources to fund it, to maintain it, to keep it, in our case, up to the Santa Barbara International Standard that we have. So right now, the majority of the council decided that, based on a lot of factors, that keeping it closed to vehicles for the nine blocks is the way to go. But now for me, and I think the council as a whole, we finally made a decision on that. No matter where you are, let's move on. Because it's, a lot of times in government, there, it's not a right or a wrong answer. It's just, you need to make a decision. There's not a right decision or wrong decision. It's a decision. And then the community's gonna say, this is where we are, and how do we all work together? And that's what I'm gonna hope has come out of this, is how do we work together? And one thing I was glad that took place is I had requested that parades be allowed to come back on State Street. In particular, solstice, Fourth of July, and the holiday parade. And to give a timeline, so for next year, the direction was for staff to work to say, how do we ensure that if there's a community organization that wants to bring those back to State Street, that we can have those parades back on State Street? And I think that'll be, go a long way towards everybody in the community feeling welcome, connecting to our past. Those parades are really about just building memories with your families and your friends over time, so.
But not the Fiesta Parade?
Fiesta, there's, there's different challenges with it because of the horses and public safety.
Sure, sure.
And Cabrillo is, I gotta say, I'm mixed on it. But, you know, there's the traditional history of going up State Street. But being in it the last couple of years as a councilmember and going along the entire beachfront, it's beautiful down there.
Yeah, it is.
It's not so hot. There's that ocean breeze and the visual backdrops. And there's a lot of access, because you have all the grassy areas. It allows residents from the east side to be able to walk down Milpus and come and see the end tail of the parades, and they see everything. So there's a lot of benefits to keeping it down there, but that's a larger discussion. And there's different public safety challenges when you're having hundreds of horses versus people in a parade.
Wow, well, thank you for all that work that you're doing. Gosh, and so controversial. Everybody has an opinion, and they're gonna, by George, tell you about it, I'm sure. So, all right, let's move to homelessness. You mentioned that as one of the important issues.
Yeah, so homelessness, it's very visible, and there's just a lot of challenges. And each person is different and has different needs. And there's a lot of resources that go into it. Recently, the Supreme Court ruled in a Grants Pass case that local jurisdictions do have the ability to take greater enforcement. It overrode the Ninth Circuit opinions out there. So what we're able to do, it's not really gonna change that much what we're doing here. We're still dedicated to ensuring that individuals are able to get into a stable situation and get the services they need to get them off of the streets. One of the things, though, that we're able to do is encampment cleanups. We now can do them within 24 hours, posting legally, that we used to do 72 hours. But that 24 hours is a game changer for us, because if there are dangerous situations that are building up with debris or fire hazards, especially as we, you know, get into the, perhaps another drier cycle, we're able to address those immediately within that 24 hour, or at that 24-hour period rather than waiting a few days. But overall, we have been working collaboratively with the county and our other partners. We received grant funding from the state for homeless encampments. But the game changer for us is that we opened the Faro Center right down on Chapala Street. It's a day center for those experiencing homelessness. So they're able to go in there, have a calm place, get off of the streets, come in and talk to people, and ultimately just build those relationships that they need. Some of them might be able to be accessing, if they're veterans, they might be able to access veterans' benefits that they didn't know that could help them get into stable housing, the mental health services. In some cases, it's just having a shower, cleanliness, and getting the services they need. Because the alternative is, they're gonna be out on the street where nobody wants to see people on the street for their safety, for our safety, over time. And to have this space, it's a really positive thing for the community as a whole. And we'll see what the benefits there are to come. But that's something that just happened a few months ago that we haven't had before.
Wow, that is really important, really great. It's gonna, you're right, a game changer. So, all right. So we're talking about issues that affect the whole city. How would you describe the needs of District 5? And how do you balance the needs of your district with the fact that the city is looking to you to make decisions for the whole city as well?
That's a great, a great question, because previously, all the councilmembers up until 2015, for 50 years, were elected at large. It means the entire city voted for all the councilmembers and the mayor. And so in 2015 was the first cycle where we elected district. It came out of a lawsuit. And so in 2015, the first three, which was the east side, the west side, that's districts one and three, and for the most part, the Mason, the waterfront, was District 2. They were all elected. And then the following cycle in 2017 is when San Roque, Hope, Locombra, and those areas, and the downtown area, Oak Park, were all elected. And that's when myself and at the time, Councilmember Sten came in, and eventually Councilmember Harmon. One of the challenges is, with this, is you need to understand the city as a whole. And remember, you represent the city as a whole, even though all the residents didn't elect you per se. But you're still impacting their lives. And what happens in the, if, what happens in the 5th District affects what happens in the 1st District. And vice versa. We are one city, and that's the approach, that's the first and foremost approach I take, and that's how I approach the job. But then, of course, as a district representative, you're gonna be more in tune with the hyper-local within those districts. And I just wanna back up a second, because I think some of the viewers might not know where the 5th District is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be good.
So the 5th District is, I think it's the easiest one to describe. It's everything on the north side of town, north of Las Pecitas and San Roque Road. So once you cross over those, from the beach to the mountains, that's the 5th District, plus the airport. And there's one sliver, which is San Marcán and De La Vina Street, where Trader Joe's and others are, that's also the 5th District. So a little bit just below McKenzie Park on that side. So, and the, and the needs there, they're different than the needs that are on, say, the east side and the west side, to a degree. First is, everybody in the city wants to feel safe. So we really need to focus on ensuring that we have adequate public safety resources. From the police, just on a day-to-day basis, to fire department, being able to access medical calls, which is a vast majority of them, but also be able to knock out, you know, structured fires as they come in. For the 5th District in particular, there's, the Locombra Plaza project is affecting, that's the biggest, the biggest issue in that, in that part of town right now. What's the future of it gonna be? Most people are saying we need more housing. And in that district, though, it's how is that going to affect, just the quality of life issues, traffic circulation, some of the most congested areas in town. There's no way to circle around Upper State Street. There's no side streets. It's the only way. When you get on Locombra, you have to take State Street for the most part to get all the way down to downtown. When you're in downtown, you can go north and south, east and west on different blocks. It's not as easy to do that in the upper part of town. We also have an issue, you know, with water, with trash, all those things with this new development that people are worried about up there. The school district, that part of town is, for the elementary school district, it's the Hope School District. It's three elementary schools, so it's not part of Santa Barbara Unified. And so those, that school district is smaller. Its revenue is primarily comes out of property taxes. And so there isn't a lot of room for them to take on a significant number of new students over time. And so those are some of the challenges that come up there. And there's also a lack of parks and open space in that area of town. And so what Councilmember Mike Jordan and I did was, we proposed that the city staff work with or talk with the owners of the Locombra Plaza Macy's project and see if we can get a better deal for our residents. And by better deal is, they have, under state law, the ability to build approximately 650 units. And one of them will actually supersede the city charter in height. It'll be a 74-foot building. And that's because of the state law. It allows, it allows that. And so if we're going to have that massive redevelopment, how do we get a better benefit? And so our staff, council unanimously supported what we proposed, to have staff talk with them. And so we're hoping to get more than the 8%. That's all it is right now, is an 8% affordable unit project, and see if we can get more. But also include public access to a public park in that redevelopment, the potential for the city to lease one of the commercial spaces to create a north civic center or engagement area, such as a satellite library or a place for the community to have meetings, that is currently unavailable up there. So those are the additional resources that that district doesn't have, that we need to tie for the future.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're thinking of everything, it sounds like. And so, speaking of thinking of everything, hearing about everything, so you also work at Trader Joe's. And I think I've heard you say that, you know, a lot of the customers that come in there, ask you questions, tell you things, give you their opinion, and that's kind of part of how you prepare yourself for knowing what people want, what they're thinking about.
Yeah, I love working at Trader Joe's there. It's such a great company to work for. And interesting, I started working there just a few months before the election, when I was first up in 2017. And it really provides me a great perspective just on the issues in the community. And a lot of times, some of the customers, or even my fellow employee colleagues, will come up to me and say, what about this issue? And it's something I hadn't even thought about. And then, or they, or there's something that happened at council where it was a really big decision, and we really got into it, and the next day, nobody says anything about it. If nobody's saying that, it can't be that big of a deal, right? And then if it, this other thing, and I start to hear other issues, I'm like, oh, that person said that. And that, that's something I really need to pay attention to. And then sure enough, because my radar is on, I'll see that there is something in the council agenda item that is tangentially related to things I hear there. And then I've met like so many people that come up and talk with me. I've become friends with a lot of people there. And they'll come in and, you know, give me, come through my line at the register and give me 30 seconds and talk with them. And if they ever wanted, and most people are really respectful, they don't actually really engage in council stuff for the most part, other than a quick, quick thing. But if people do, I always say, this is a separate job, but I am definitely great, ready to meet with you. So just send me an email to my city email, and I'll set up a time with you.
Oh, that's good.
A few people have taken me up on that, and it's been beneficial, because if they really wanna talk more, that means it's something on their mind. So I said, just send me, and I'll meet with anybody on there. And that's part of my philosophy that I learned from my former bosses, Salud Carbajal and Naomi Schwartz, is meet with anybody and be accessible.
Yeah, that is a great way to do it. I mean, you don't wanna be standing there talking with somebody and holding up the whole, the whole line. Yeah, so, all right. Let's talk about Naomi Schwartz. And so you prepared yourself for this role. And, I mean, to me, it seems kind of a unique way, but really smart. You first started out as an unpaid intern with School Superintendent Jack O'Connell, is that right? And then what, and then what, and then what?
So yes, what happened was, at the time, I had graduated college and I had gone through a transition in my life. My dad, Frank McConnell, he's my stepdad, but he raised me. And he had unexpectedly passed away when I was 21. And so my mom and I had moved back from Lompoc down here. And so as we're getting things in order, I said, what do I wanna do? And my life took a definite turn. So I said, public policy is something that I had studied. I was a history major at Notre Dame and a focus in American history. And so I said, I'm gonna continue to work. I was, myself, working in a hotel here locally, and got an internship unpaid at, at the time, he was our state senator, Jack O'Connell. And he had been our Assembly Member for many years. And so I learned the basics of what it means in public service from his staff. And, and you really learn the foundation and the fundamentals. And it's the very basics. And when I mean basics, I mean extreme basics. Pick up the phone, you always identify who you are, you say your name, and at the office. So at the time, it was like Senator O'Connell's office, this is Eric, how can I help you? And we all appreciate that, but sometimes we've got on the phone, we call, it's like, who am I talking to? You know right away. And they would teach me just how to ensure that the constituents know that they got the right place. And then the skills they taught me for researching and just the ability to listen. And that's what the internship was, is listen, 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 see how the senator interacts with the public, see how the staff does. And then eventually, about six months later, there was an open position in then Naomi Schwartz's office. She was the county supervisor for the 1st District. And Salud Carbajal was her chief of staff.
Yes, I remember those days.
And so I applied, and it's one of those things, when you're younger, you apply for things, and you don't really know the gravity of the situation. And I didn't know how heavyweights they were and their whole histories. And, and so I went in. I didn't think they'd hire me, and then they did, because they saw something in me that I didn't see. And I'm forever grateful to the two of them. And they really took me under their wing, and they had me prepared. And for example, today, as a city council member, this morning, I was down in Carpinteria. I serve on a board called Beacon, which is the Beach Erosion Authority. And it's, it's all these different, it's the two counties, Santa Barbara, Ventura, and all the coastal cities meet to discuss and beach policy and issues. Naomi Schwartz founded that over 35 years ago.
Really?
With Ventura's county supervisor, John Flynn, who was more conservative, but they found this common ground together, the two of them, and they created this, this joint government that really looks at our coastal together so that we're all working together to preserve and protect our coast. And one of my first assignments was to staff, back in 2002, was to staff Naomi and then eventually Salud. So we'd go down to Carpinteria every couple of months for the meeting. And I got to learn and meet everybody and learn about these coastal issues. And being on Santa Barbara City Council, I'm on Beacon now, and I've been on it for a few years. So those are the things that they taught me. And, and just constituent service was the number one priority for both of them. And I think, when you look at our now congressman and the constituent service that he does himself and his staff, it's second to none.
Oh, yeah.
And it comes from Naomi Schwartz and him, and they've instilled that in me. And they've instilled it in so many other elected officials. But to have that mentorship by two of some of the best electeds we've ever had in our county was really influential for me, having them as mentors.
So you just are so good at paying attention. And, I mean, you know, you put yourself in a situation where you don't really know all the answers or what to expect, but you pay attention, and you listen, and you learn. And that is just so important, yeah. So now, you also have served on various nonprofit boards and committees and all. You're a pretty busy guy. How do you, how do you decide where to put your time, spend your time? You're a pretty busy guy. How do you, how do you decide where to put your time, spend your time?
Well, s- serving on uh city boards and commissions or nonprofits, it's important because it it has to mean something for for you as a person. And it's it's something you're interested in and is there an opportunity to give back to the community and and make a positive impact? And for me, it's just gravitated over time, especially uh issues affecting families and. Our youth, so like you and I, we met, you know, back in, I think it was two thousand six or so on the con board. And uh dealing with families that were in crisis and making sure that the policies were there to in the staffing support and. I've also been involved with the um through the council, I call some drug abuse, the fighting back youth mentor program. And I've mentored uh some about five or six, five over the years and uh.
That's great.
They started a monthly school and, you know, it's just, I've learned so much from those from those, our kids when I meet them and. I'm still in touch with uh three of them. One is, met him when he was ten. He's twenty seven now. I met another one when he was ten, he's twenty four now. And we go to, I'll take, you know, take him out to lunch individually every now and then, they're still living in town. Been through many positive experiences with them. There's there's many challenges, but always there for them. And building those relationships and and just being there. The other thing with um with uh s- service is it's an opportunity to meet so many great people in the community. And learn from them. And the most important is you you're putting your politics aside. We're very polarized politically right now in our country. But then when you're serving on a a board or a commission or a nonprofit with twenty other people or fifteen or twenty, the con board was twenty five, I think. Everybody there had, I didn't, you could guess some some of them, but we never, we never talked politics.
Yeah.
Because we had a common goal of to try to improve families' lives and you bring people together. You realize that there's much more that uh that we can coalesce around. And um it's just a really great learning experience and you build your network and you can take advice from people that. If you don't have those experiences, you don't build that that trust, so. Um I'm blessed to have been involved with so many great organizations and Surf Rider was one that I started out really early on. And trying to protect the Gaviota Coast, they taught me a lot. Um you know, I really started even before Jack O'Connell was Surf Rider.
Oh.
Because I was surfing and same spot and they got me, there's a couple of people said, why don't you come to a meeting? Went to a meeting, I didn't know any of the the acronyms, I didn't know what an E I R or CEPO was and that's environmental impact report. Um it's California Equality Act, but they taught me just as as someone who wanted to protect the coast, and the next thing I know, I'm helping uh stop a. Golf course from going in on the uh Gaviota Coast. Commission, so you just constantly look for opportunities to grow and develop.
Gosh, I am so impressed. So you um grew up for the most part on the South Coast. Tell us about your childhood time.
So my my mom and I moved uh up to uh, she went back to UCSB. My parents were divorced when I was three years old. And so my mom was a single mom, uh going back to school at UCSB to get her uh degree. And so we lived there and for a few years in Isla Vista. And then she met my stepdad, who was a professor at UCSB and ironically, she never had his class. They met somewhere else completely and didn't even know who he was.
Yeah.
And then he came into my life uh when I was about six years old. And so then we lived in the in the South Coast here in Santa Barbara, uh lived over in um the Lachlan Apartments on Foothill and. That area and I went to Montefiore's school where my kids went through actually, which was really cool to have them go through that.
That's very cool.
And then in um a couple of things and we'll get, we'll get back to this one a second, but in nineteen eighty eight, we went to East Berlin. And uh my, he had gotten a Fulbright grant to teach in East Berlin and and I'll get back to that in in a minute, but. When we came back, uh the housing had started to go up in uh costs in Santa Barbara, so. Uh at the time, even back in nineteen eighty nine, parents couldn't afford to own a house here and they couldn't afford to rent here either. Was that they made too much to live here and they made, they didn't make too little to live here. Cause they they were stuck in that that missing middle of middle class.
Yeah.
So they bought a house in Lompoc and commuted and so I uh did my teenage years up in Lompoc and made some great friendships and. It's given me a really in great perspective countywide. Kind of the difference or where the similarities are. And then went to Notre Dame for college, uh go Irish. And then after that, I moved back to Santa Barbara when my stepdad unexpectedly passed away and and I've been back here for twenty five years. And met my wife paddling outrigger canoes.
I love that story. Julie, that's her name, right?
My wife Julie, yeah, and uh we have two boys we're extremely proud of. One's Henry, he's a senior at San Marcos and my uh sophomore. Charles is at Dos Publos and we have a dog, Morgan Friedman.
Morgan Friedman, what kind of a dog is it?
She's uh, she's legendary. Uh she is, we, a rescue and we're, think she is a corgi. German Shepherd.
Oh, gosh. What a combination.
She's an all black, it looks like an all black German Shepherd puppy, but when she stands up, she's a corgi's body.
Gosh.
She has huge floppy ears and a big tail, so she she just looks like a German Shepherd stuck on a corgi's body and it's. She's legendary and the neighbor, and everybody loves her.
So, so let's talk about, here you were ten years old. And you and your mom went to East Berlin. Tell us about how that. That transpired and what, yeah, how it affected you, what you learned. That's a really powerful experience, I know.
Yeah, so so East Berlin, it's. The the farther removed in time I get from, this was nineteen eighty eight, it was January to June in nineteen eighty eight, so uh coming up on thirty, what? Thirty five, forty years almost. It's a, it's a crazy experience and the older I get, the more I appreciate it. Uh so what happened was my stepdad had applied, uh my dad Frank had applied for a Fulbright grant to teach English literature. At Humboldt University in East Berlin and it was part of the whole building relations with the Reagan administration and trying to build relations with the Eastern Bloc. And he was accepted, so we left in January of nineteen eighty eight on a beautiful day, it was one of those seventy five degrees sunny morning. I remember it, going down to LAX and the whole family was waving us off and. And the next thing we know, it's January and January day in East Berlin. And uh it was cold and bitter and we lived behind the the uh the wall. We lived in East Berlin behind the wall for six months and uh it was the best, it's like living, it's like the Wizard of Oz where. Everything here is in color and and all of a sudden you're living in a world that's just black and white, very gray. And it's just a completely different experience and uh I went to an East German school where they. They have a school for foreign kids and what they did there was they took all the foreign kids and they would put you in for six months. They would put you in a class where all you do is you learn German.
Oh, gosh.
And so that was the role, is get you fluent. And then if I had stayed another six months, I would have been in an East German school. But um so I was in a school, and this is nineteen eighty, so all the communist countries were our enemies, so the next thing is I found myself. In in a class with Russian kids, kids from Hungary, Poland, Cuba. Uh all these other places and none of us could speak the same language. And I was an American kid, so I definitely stood out. But eventually, we all started, you know, saying hello, guten tag. Ich heiße Eric, and then they would say the same thing and. Um and 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 there, and we would start with those few things and after a few months, we became more fluent in all these kids with all these different languages. Um we all became great friends and uh I made some friends in particular from uh Hungary. Uh they were about my age, uh Dejar and his his friends and he um and went to their house a couple of times and his family was so. Honored to have an American kid come in and they created uh cooked up the best Hungarian goulash and dumplings I've ever had in my life. Like it's still, I still remember the smell of them, you know, thirty five years later.
Gosh.
Um the one thing I would say is, well, what what, if I could describe what it was like in. Is that until recently, there wasn't a comparable experience to what it was like living in a communist country. But COVID was very similar, not quite the same, but very similar to what it was like. Uh it's very isolating and you had to deal with shortages. You, one example was going to a grocery store. Um if you went to a grocery store during COVID, you had to wait in lines to get in. And you got in, there was shortages, there was things that you wanted to get that might not have been there. And it was very, and the and the government would constantly change rules on people. And so it was very stressful all the time. And in our case, it was because of that worldwide global emergency and trying to figure out how to, you know, save people's lives and and. In that case, it was inflicted by the government. And so it, that experience and people not having a voice within their government. Uh really impacted me throughout the years that I studied government more. Um it makes me appreciative that we live in this country that we do. Where on any Tuesday at city council, the most important part is that people can come up. And speak to us for three minutes on anything within our purview that they wanna speak to. They can criticize us. And we have to sit there and say, that's your right to do that. Um if you went and criticized the East German government, you'd be gone in some cases. And that actually happened to uh people that we'd met, like they got too close to us and all of a sudden, they just disappeared. We don't know what happened to them. And so it's always, it's something that has really resonated with me. Um again, it's why I, they make it a priority. To be responsive and be out there and accessible to the public because we have to have trust in our government institutions. And that's why I feel blessed again to work for two of the Naomi and Salud, who really believed in that as well and exhibited it, but um. But that's the closest example I could give of what it was like is just the stress and the short, the food shortages of COVID. And just that horrible time that we don't wanna go back to, but that's what it was like every day. There's some, there were some positives there in terms of the the people that we would meet and. Uh they s- they still had that, they still had an optimism within them, but they um, but they definitely were not able to participate in their government like we're able to. And uh led to a lot of unfortunate situations.
So you spent your whole time on the east side, you were never able to go over to the west side?
No, um my mom and I went over periodically. Uh we would, we would go over, you know, every couple of weeks. Uh it was a a challenge to get over there. Um it's always going through the border crossing, but to go to West Berlin. And uh we did it some to communicate with our family because if we needed to call or something, we would wanna go to West Berlin where the phone lines are secured. Uh in the east, on the East Berlin side, there, we didn't have a phone in our apartment, most people didn't even have phones in their, um this is the nineteen eighties and. Economically, they were really depressed in the eastern uh block, but most did not have phones in there. You had one phone in your entire apartment complex and it was bugged. Um and then you had black and white TVs, those types of things and um. You always, we had to worry about that they would, they could come into our apartment anytime that they wanted and we know, we sometimes knew that they, we'd go out for the day and come back and they'd been in there and. We knew they had um bugs in our apartment to try to hear what we were saying. And my mom ended up eventually, like a year ago, got my dad's Stasi file, so they had a whole Stasi file on him and. And we sometimes see the Stasi following us and we have some pictures of them, like they, we'd stick pictures of them, there's nothing they could do because we're Americans, so we had that luxury, but. But going to the west, it was always, okay, you could relax a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was uh, I enjoyed going in into the west and and seeing it and um seeing the Berlin Wall from both perspectives, see from the east side and the west side. Completely different.
What an experience, what a powerful experience. Ten years old and you remember all these things. So then you come back and you and your mom co-authored a book that I have read and it is fascinating. It's a great story and you're a wonderful writer. And so show us the book, Ghosts of East Berlin.
My book, Ghosts of East Berlin, uh co-written with my mom, Celeste McConnell Barber. This is actually a picture of me on the Berlin Wall when I was ten years old. It's one that we decided to use for the cover. And um it was quite a process of of writing. We wrote it uh, gosh, ten years ago. Is when we came out, twenty fourteen, and it was for the uh twenty fifth anniversary at the time of the wall coming down.
Oh.
So about five years before, I told my mom, I said, mom, we need to write down our stories.
So it was your idea?
Yeah, I talked to her about it and I said, we just need to write down our stories just for our own memories.
How old were you at the time then? So ten years ago.
Ten years ago, what was I, forty, forty s- or thirty five, thirty six, somewhere around there, mid thirties.
Okay.
Uh I had, my kids were little at the time.
Okay.
This is two thousand fourteen, my kids were like five and seven or somewhere around there. And so we, we, I told mom, my mom was, let's write it down so we have our stories so we can share them with our family. And then eventually as um, it was, it was easier for me to write them because my memories were as childhood, so it was, I could do, it was a lot more difficult for my mom. Uh because my my dad had passed away at that point.
Okay.
Passed away about ten years after um after Berlin and so. So it dredged up a lot of emotions.
Yes, oh, sure.
Um but what we ended up doing was writing our own vignettes. We were trying to figure out how to tell the story. That was the hardest part is. How do you have two people?
Yeah.
Who are different ages, different writing styles, different memories, try to come up with a narrative, linear. At first, it was like a linear story and it didn't work, it's a linear story. And so we just individually just wrote up our own strongest memories and so made little short story vignettes. And then it occurred to me that that's the, that was the the best way to to do the book, so. I have a bunch of uh short stories in there, about a dozen or so, and they're, they're quick reads, they're, you know, a few pages each. Of my memories and they're not in any particular order of events happened, but they're all part of the narrative. And so then. The way the book is structured is have my stories. And then it has my mom's stories, so they're two different, so you're not caught off guard by different writing styles. It's, you can submerge yourself in me and get used to my writing styles, my mom's. And then we were able to find two articles that my dad had written. One was from a Daily Nexus article he wrote when we got back from nineteen eighty nine out at UCSB. It was about music and it's pretty funny if you read it, um about the songs that were uh were there and. I gotta say, there's a meme out there that happens, it's called getting Rick rolled. And that, at that time, we were in Germany is when um when that song was really popular, so. Uh Rick Ashley and and uh Never Gonna Give You Up, you know that song, I won't sing it because I'm tone deaf when it comes to singing. But um that was when it was a number one hit. Um so I have strong memories of the music in the in the Olympics that year of nineteen eighty eight, and so we write about that. And then um then he wrote another piece in nineteen ninety, after the wall had come down and we had gone back um and to visit and it was still chaotic there. And so he wrote, he was a national scholar, so he wrote for National Publications and one is a a Catholic magazine called Common Wheel. And he wrote an article about uh Berlin and Germany and all that um that we were able to reprint um and put it in the uh. We retyped it up and put it in there and um so he had, he, so it was very cool that my dad was able to be. An author in the book as well, and then we threw some pictures in there for people to see.
Yeah.
But it was a great experience writing with my mom and um then we, we got in a lot of local bookstores and we did a. Few down in Ventura and did a lot of talks at the time, people were really fascinated by it. And it's actually, the book came back a little bit. Because people were really interested in um what's happening with Russia and Ukraine and in Europe and and potentially Cold War. And then people found out on our book and like, this is so relevant today.
Yes.
And the issues, they haven't gone away even forty years later, so.
So i- and a person can get this on Amazon?
Yep, it's available.
Ghosts of East Berlin. Well, congratulations and thank you for doing that. So when you think back to when your sons were ten, maybe, did you look at them and think? Uh I mean, reme- remember maybe of when you were there and think about the impacts. On them and how their life is so different from how yours was and. Did you think about that? Did you compare? Did you talk to them about it at all?
Great, great question because it, when my kids, they're teenagers now, uh when they were ten and around that age. It kind of as an adult, it just blew my mind, like what the heck was I doing? Like I was going around. The city by myself at ten years old.
Oh, my gosh.
Cause I had to get to school and the school was, it was too, I had to get on the, it's the S-bahn, which is their metro. But then I had to switch and then go on a subway, so it took me forty five minutes to get in. It's only a few miles away, but it'd take like forty five minutes to get in. But I was doing that on my own in in East Berlin at ten years old. No offense to my kids, but I couldn't see them doing that, you know, they're they're Santa Barbara kids, you know, so.
Yeah.
I love those guys, I spoil them. Um but the the pride of me and Julie's life is them, but, but you know, but. The kids, what I will say and going back to COVID is those kids, that the kids that went through COVID. Which is this new generation now, all the kids. They have a resiliency in them that that is going to enable them to meet so many challenges going forward. In the future that I'm very optimistic about these kids today that were high school, junior high, elementary school in twenty twenty. Um they're, they're right now, um some of them are just finishing college and they're coming up. And they're gonna, they see the world in a different way than than any of our other generations, which is similar to what I experienced when I was in Berlin, so I. I understand it from that sense as a child, being in this totally foreign environment where you you're not, it threw you off of the freedoms and the. The ability to be yourself um and choose your individual um, your individual goals and aspirations. And so uh it hit them a little bit later, that, but um but they made it through that and it was a struggle. Uh but going back, it was, it's, I learned a lot and I built up a lot of. Uh but going back, it was, it's, I learned a lot and I built up a lot of um skills that I would later apply. Understand it at the time, like, like in one of the chapters, I won't spoil it, but it's, it's one that um that a few people have come up to me and said that they really appreciate the chapter is I, I got lost in the city by myself when I was ten and I had no idea where I was. And so I had to find a way home because there was no phones. There was nothing, I didn't speak the language. And so it just, it just taught me um certain skills that I was able to then apply throughout my life.
And you could trust yourself that you'd come up with something.
Yeah, that's what it taught me was uh you can't panic and and uh and you just have to calm down and look around and figure a way out of the situation. Because if you don't, the situation's gonna, the situation will come to a conclusion no matter what happens.
Right.
Where at whatever situation you're in, if it's stressful or you, it will go one way or the other. And if you panic, you're gonna have a worse outcome. But no matter, again, no matter what it is, but if you just take a moment, take a breath and try to say, what are the skills that I have? What, how do I inside myself, what am I gonna do? And you'll realize that a lot of the times, you've been through similar situations or you can apply things that will get you, one is to safety, if it's an emergency situation. Um or it'll, it'll guide you to a different direction so you can get a better outcome. But every situation's different and, but you just build those skills. But Berlin taught me a lot of skills. The most important of which is, is, and I think this prepared me more for anything for public service, was always treat people respectfully and listen, listen to them. And when they offer you something, it's important to accept the gift. If they invite you into their home to, the, the most important lesson in life was if someone invites you into their home and they cook you a meal, you have to accept it. One, it's, you're probably gonna get a great home-cooked meal, but it's not the meal that it's, they're inviting you in because they want to get to know you and then it's a sign of respect that you go in there and they're going to appreciate that. And then you do the same and you build these lo- long-lasting friendships, usually over some, usually over a meal or a drink or something, but um like I said, that that Hungarian meal, I remember to this day and his parents were so happy to have a, have an American kid in there and it's the countries in the eighties that we were taught, like they're the enemies. No, they weren't. It was our governments were at, were at conflict, but we weren't. We were just a bunch of kids.
You are a wise young man, then and now. So um let's say that someone is thinking about um becoming a public servant. What advice might you have for them?
So the first thing I would, I would say is, one, ask yourself, why do you want to serve? Go back and and if you could come up with a mission statement, it's, it's like strategic planning, but this is a little wonky, but if you could tell, what is your, what's your purpose in life? What do you want to do? And why would serving as in a like a public official help you achieve those goals? And then the most important part of that is, are those goals your own personal goals or are they goals for the community as a whole? Because you see something that the whole community could be before. So unless you're, that's the thing you, are you doing it because you want it for yourself? Or you're doing it because you want to serve? You have to clarify that because a lot of people I've seen get into this, get into these positions because they want it, they want to promote themselves up. They wanna, they want to be the center of, they want to make the decisions. Um and that's just the way our system's designed, but that's the first thing. Second thing is, listen, like it's, listen to other people. What are people saying? What are the issues out there? Uh do you agree with them or not? What are your, and then you start informing your own thoughts and the more you listen, the more you learn. And um so those are the first two things I would say is understand who you are and why you want to serve and listen. And then the the third piece is play the long game. And by that, even if there's a, is how do you set yourself up for success and understand that in order to really be effective, what relationships have you built? What's your other service, what community service have you had? Um how have you built yourself up to have the proper skills to be an effective elected? There's some people who want to jump right in. Sometimes they're successful. But when you really get involved with the community for years and years and years and that opportunity comes in, you're much better prepared. And you have a much better network of people to rely on that you trust. I mean, that's, like I did, I started as an unpaid intern. Then I worked for fourteen years under Salud Garbal, Naomi Schwartz. I served on the city library board, the the um, the harbor commission, plus the nonprofits. In each one of those, I learned. And all that, you build your confidence. And so when you're there, you're ready to serve and you'll just know when the timing's right. So play the long game and don't rush it. Don't rush getting in there just because there's an open seat that you're thinking of running for. The seats always come open at some point, so.
Oh, that's, that is fabulous advice. Oh, my gosh. I am just uh so impressed and so glad that you are our city council member and out there rooting for us and making things happen and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate the the kind words and it's always fun that our paths continue to cross.
I like that too.
So it's always, and you never know. And and that thing is, living in Santa Barbara especially, is just make sure that you're, you're always, even when you disagree with people.
Yeah.
It's fine to disagree with them, just be upfront with them about why. Because it's a small town. I call Santa Barbara the biggest small town you could ever live in. Because we have all the amenities of a big, you know, with all the arts and the culture and we're internationally known and but at the same time, everybody knows everybody. You're your one degree from everybody. And the person that you got in an argument today in this field and in public policy, might be an argument on the policy, they could be your ally tomorrow. You never know.
Yeah.
Or they will be your ally. I've had it before. We disagree on this, but we're together on this. And if you have positive relationships and you're just you know, your, your number one thing is integrity.
Yeah. Oh, I love that word.
And you have to have it for yourself and we'll do it. And Trader Joe's has seven core values. Go back to why Trader Joe's is such a balance. They have seven core values and the number one in value that they promote is integrity at the store. And that's the number one value we should all have is integrity, where you do what you say you're gonna do and you live your values. And so um that's the way I approach it.
Wonderful. Well, thank you again. Thanks for coming on our show to share it with our audience.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and uh see you, you again and uh appreciate uh being able to tell a little bit about my story and my book.
Yes, yes. I'm sure folks are gonna run out there and get that book. It's really interesting. And thank you for joining us on Community Conversations and we'll see you next time.